Twenty-three meeting of the Culver Town Council to order. Before we get started, I'd like to remind people this meeting is being recorded. Your participation is your consent to be recorded on the town's YouTube channel. If you have a cellphone, please put it on mute. Same way for those that are online. Real call, please.
William Hoviger.
Present.
Bill Giffins.
Here.
Bill Hamm.
Here.
Sally Ratchardi.
Here.
Rich West.
Present.
All join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have approval of the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes, please?
Someone.
It's been moved by Mr. Hamm, seconded by
Rich.
Mr. West. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, thank you, Bill. Next on the agenda is the approval of the May financial reports. Do I have a motion?
It's moved, seconded.
Moved by Mr. Hamm, seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, approved. It's been suggested that since we have so many people here tonight, and I think basically because of the solar panel situation, the batteries, I think we're going to move that up to the first part of the agenda, and we'll take care of the rest of the businesses after this is over with. We have Jeanette Cerisi, Deb Vandermark, and Paul Levitt. I'm going to give all of you about twenty minutes. Is that enough?
Yeah.
I need to. I don't think it's gonna be that long.
Okay. All right. Will you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, Council. I'm Jeanette Cerisi. I'm here to talk about our solar ordinance. Before I begin, I want to be clear that neither Deb Vandermark or Paul Levitt are clients of mine in any sort of capacity. I know we're listed on the agenda together, but I don't represent them. A couple of weeks ago, I listened to Deb and Paul speaking on the issue of industrial solar and industrial batteries at a county meeting. After hearing Paul and Deb talk, it made sense to me that I would go look at our town ordinance and its two-mile zone. So I took a look at the ordinance, and I found our ordinance to be a mixed-up copy-and-paste effort that leaves Culver open to industrial solar development about anywhere in Culver and in the two-mile zone. How do I know the ordinance has copy-and-paste errors? I'll read you a section. The developer has the duty of compliance with reasonable conditions laid down by the Marshall County Plan Commission. Should be the Culver Plan Commission. That's the first error. Okay? Under our ordinance, solar panels are called solar energy systems. There are categories of systems: roof-mounted, ground-mounted, microsolar, small-scale solar, medium-scale solar, which is less than forty thousand square feet, and large-scale solar, anything more than forty thousand square feet. Small-scale solar and large-scale solar are fully permitted uses in every single zoning district of Culver: suburban, residential, lake, commercial, industrial, and agricultural. Fully permitted use means that to put up a large industrial solar field, all one would need to have to do was fill out a permit, submit a site plan to the technical review committee, and get the building commissioner to sign off. And the requirements of our site plans are minimal: show property lines, drawings of the system, show proposed layout of the system, the distance between the proposed solar collector and all property lines, and the tallest finished solar height, names and addresses, list how the parcel's owned, and documentation that you talked to the utility company. You fulfill those requirements, and you can put up your thousand-acre solar field right up to the setback limits on the lake, in-town, out-of-town. The ordinance leaves a lot to be desired. I don't think the drafters of the ordinance were contemplating these large industrial thousand-acre solar parks when they drafted the ordinance, especially when I have reviewed our setbacks for solar, which are the same as regular housing: suburban, twenty-five feet front and back, fifteen feet on the sides; lake, twenty-five feet front and back, ten feet on the sides; residential, twenty-five feet and back, twenty feet, twenty-five feet and back, ten feet on the sides. And I could go on, but those are kind of the setbacks around here in Culver. Other communities are imposing setbacks of two hundred and fifty feet to fifteen hundred feet on industrial solar. And a good site plan should have things like the number of panels, type of panel, generating capacity, maximum spatial extent, the means of interconnecting to the electrical grid, the equipment manufacturer's name and address, drawings of all related accessory structures, roads, engineering certification that all equipment is within accepted professional standards given local soil and climate conditions, and engineering analysis of the equipment showing compliance with applicable regulations, a description of the solar company's business structure, a layout plan drawn to scale including distances and certified by a registered land surveyor, restrictions about the amount of noise that is generated from the inverters, a fire protection plan for the construction and operation of the facility, including emergency access to the site, and proof of correspondence and cooperation with wildlife agencies regarding endangered species. We need those sort of things in a site plan, and we need to address the setbacks I discussed. And if we're going to have industrial solar, we need to make it at least a special use, not a permitted use, so that surrounding neighbors can participate in a VCA hearing. And moreover, our solar ordinance does not even require the solar companies installing the panels to post a bond for the panels' removal or decommissioning if they should go bankrupt. And now we have the issue of these large battery storage units that are being developed. They are the size of semi-trailers and are used to store excess energy coming onto the grid. Our ordinance says nothing on how to zone for those. There's real concerns about the safety of those batteries. Finally, why I'm here today is I think it would be best for the council to certify a proposal to the Plan Commission today for a complete moratorium on large-scale solar energy systems and utility-scale battery energy storage systems in Culver and in the two-mile zone until we can develop a better zoning ordinance to address our concerns with such moratorium being in place until at least October first, two thousand twenty-four, when I know completes a solar panel decommissioning study in accordance with Senate Bill thirty-three.
Thank you. Deb, do you have anything you want to add?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Debbie Vandermark, one four seven five oh Tulip Road, Culver. My focus has been mostly on the county ordinance. However, after listening to Jeanette's presentation, the town ordinance needs some work as well, it sounds like. I've been a Culver area resident my entire life. My purpose is to increase awareness of a large solar farm project that is near the two-mile zone of the town of Culver in the borough neighborhood. Our concerns are only towards the large industrial solar projects. These projects cover hundreds of acres. Prior to tonight, we have appeared to two county commissioner meetings, one county council meeting, and the county plan commission meeting. The county council and one county commissioner agree a moratorium to amend our county ordinance. The county ordinance is weak and needs updating. The town ordinance may also need updating, as Jeanette just said. The community concerns include loss of agricultural land, environmental impact, protecting adjacent landowners, property value guarantees, an emergency fire safety plan, liability insurance, decommissioning, material data safety sheets, and protecting farmers that have signed leases, and an energy storage ordinance, which we do not have, also referred to as battery storage. It may be in the best interest to hire experts that understand these many concerns and assist in developing the language for our ordinances. I ask today, as we educate ourselves and others about the big solar push throughout the county, you join us in discussions and solutions on this huge project. If the project is approved, it will be here for many years, and it'll be too late to change it. Would you consider a moratorium on large industrial solar farms on agricultural land in the two-miles zone? Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Paul?
I got it. There are eight minutes. Anyway, I'm gonna hand out a... This is a synopsis. I can get my fingers working. This is a synopsis of the current ordinances.
Name and address.
Excuse me.
Name and address.
My name is... My name's Paul Levitt. I live on one six one six Eighteenth Road, Culver, Indiana, Indiana County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. I'll get ahead of myself. Anyway, as I was saying, these are the ordinances that we presently have, and then I put some notes in of what I'm going to talk about and follow up with what Jeanette and Deb have said.
Good evening, and thank you three times. I appreciate you letting us speak. I'm a longtime Marshall County resident. I basically moved here when I was five years old. I consider Culver, Indiana, the diamond of Marshall County. There's no question it's the diamond when it comes to what all the people come here, when it comes to property values around this lake and surrounding. I don't know if you recently... I enjoy driving the county roads. I am blown away by the number of houses that are on the outskirts and keep growing. They're out there, new ones, nice ones. So this evening, there are three points that I'd like to make about our current ordinances, dealing with our Marshall County industrial ordinances and that I'll say have effect on Culver. One, the setbacks are currently too short. Right-of-way is only a hundred and fifty feet, only seventy-five feet from property values, and a mere two hundred and fifty feet from residential homes. Second, there's no emergency fire safety plan. And third, there's no property value guarantees for the people that are going to be surrounded by these solar fields. First, let's look at the current setbacks. Are not enough to stop the loss of property value for residential owners amidst the industrial solar fields planned in Marshall County. Our request is a change where a minimum of five hundred feet is needed, the greater to up to fifteen hundred feet to protect the property values that are going to be surrounded by these solar fields. Make the setbacks for residential's the same as our current ordinance right now, at five hundred feet. A standard setback of five hundred feet for the right-of-way and for property lines for those who oppose the industrial solar fields. Protect the homeowners who have their homes in the backyard of these industrial solar setbacks. Second, there's no property value guarantee for the homeowners and industrial fields amassing. And this, currently, we hear it's a thousand to fifteen hundred acres, and in a previous conversation I've had, we aren't certain what size it is because we don't know how much energy they're gonna pull from this, so it may even be bigger. The company behind it is Invenergy. They're a one-point-five-billion-dollar company, and they can afford to put this into the property value guarantee. In the current of what I estimate of where this solar field is going, there's not even fifty homes that need a property value guarantee when you look about, when you look at your two-mile and up. I'm outside the boundary. Solar companies state there is no property value loss. That's what they say. Then the property value guarantee would never cost Invenergy anything, so why not put it in place? But the cost of the property values guarantee on Invenergy instead of causing our Marshall County residential homeowners to lose value in the most valuable asset, their home. Third, there is no emergency fire safety plan. No emergency plan for chemical spills for industrial battery fires. Full cost of chemical spill or battery fires goes on the back of Marshall County taxpayers. Sheriff... Can't think of her sheriff's name.
Haspel.
Haspel. Haspel. Sheriff Haspel. What is it?
Haspel.
Haspel. Anyway, he said before the Plan Commission and stated that he doesn't have the ability to take care of this stuff that's not covered when it comes to emergency. And once again, I say you look at Invenergy. When you look at the size of the company, it's a one-point-billion, five-point-billion-dollar company that can take care of this, and you can put it in the ordinances, and it won't be on the taxpayers' backs. The setback to property value guarantees, emergency fire plans must be changed to make sure Marshall County protects the homeowners that are not the losers to Invenergy, and Invenergy can afford this, our homeowners can't. There was one more thing that I hear consistently, that the farmer says he has the right to do with his property what he chooses. If that's true, why do I have to go to the... Why do we have zoning boundaries? Why do we have to get building permits? Why do we create ordinances in this county? Why are we standing here discussing an ordinance if they have the right to do whatever they want with their property? The current industrial ordinances are very weak for Marshall County, and they're weak for the tax-paying residential homeowners in Marshall County, do not protect them. Please review and revise our current industrial ordinances, take the burden off the Marshall County residential homeowners, and put it on the burden of the one-point-five-billion-dollar industry. Thank you, Paul.
Jeanette, or Deb, or anything else?
The only thing I would say is Paul was giving setback numbers for the Marshall County ordinance. Our setback numbers are actually far less than the numbers he gave. So technically, you could have an industrial solar park by property on the lake if it had the money and comply with the twenty-five-foot setback, the way our ordinance is written.
Rich, two questions, Jeanette, for you, or just being lazy. Would you know our ordinance number for Culver?
Our ordinance?
The ordinance?
It's a huge book. It's online. It's on our website.
No, but not the actual ordinance number, like two thousand oh five dash...
Right. You mean one where it's written?
Yes.
No, it's been rewritten a few years ago.
It's been reinterpreted. What's a perfectly your question, I guess?
So that we can... I can find it easily and read it for myself.
No, I don't.
That's fine.
I think I might actually have it up on my computer.
That's fine. I was just being lazy instead of looking for it myself.
And for...
The second question is, you're asking us to have a moratorium on large fields?
Large-scale energy solar systems defined under the ordinance, and then also utility-scale battery energy storage systems, which is a state term.
And the large scale is defined in...
I could pull up the House bill for you, but it's so many ways... It's contemplated that we'll be putting so many megawatts into the grid is how they define it, so they're big.
This is... So it's not... Recently, were some solar panels installed on a residential unit in Culver?
We're not talking...
I'd like one to put the definition of large was...
Yeah, over forty thousand square feet is the definition.
Large. Thank you.
Was there any other question?
No, listen. Thank you.
I have a question for Jeanette.
Yes.
Do you happen to know when the subsidy will run out based on...
Please identify yourself, please, for the record.
...of replacement by thirty... There are subsidies that the government has passed, but there's an expiration date on that. Do you know when that is?
I don't know when the expiration date is, but I know that the project's... Interesting company inside of Jane.
What's the subsidy? I know that.
Bill, you have any comments?
Yes, to further to talk about what Deb was saying, last week, there was a commissioners' meeting to talk about this, and then there, on Thursday night, there was a Plan Commission, Marshall County Plan Commission meeting, of which I attended, and over seventy-five people, you know, attended and spoke. About fifteen people spoke at that meeting. I spoke and was one of them, and one of the things that I have come to learn in studying the solar project and the large industrial battery storage units, yes, there is a county ordinance that was done three, four years ago or so, but it did not address and wasn't even contemplated anything about these large industrial storage units. So it's a whole new ballgame, and I think that's what Jeanette and Deb and Paul are bringing to our forefront, is that, yes, we have some loopholes in our ordinance, and so does the county. And with stuff that's never been brought up until recently, you know, we need to go back and take a look at these things, and the only way to do it is to, you know, place a moratorium on it while the state does some more checking and other people do, and, you know, two years, you know, and we might even have to extend it. I don't know. I'm no expert, but I just don't like what I hear. I mean, look at the YouTube videos about these electric buses, the Teslas that catch on fire. You cannot put these things out. You just have to let them burn. So I went ahead and distributed to the council members tonight, and Deb and them have it, that I sent a letter to the editor yesterday, and it's entitled, "Why We Need a Moratorium on Solar in Marshall County." And I evidenced what I attended last week and the reasons I think we need to do this. So that's what I have to say, and we can read this into the minutes, or we can make it a part of the minutes. Bill asked me earlier, do I want it a part of the minutes? You know, I know that Jeanette has requests for us tonight to put this moratorium. I think if, when we talk about it and decide what we're gonna do, you know, it's whatever the council's wishes are.
Well, I've got clarification on what the county considers a medium-scale, large-scale, and farm-scale. Now, whether the town has different settings for those, it would make a difference, but for a farm scale, it's four hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and one square feet to be a farm scale, and for a large scale, it's forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one square feet. But then... Well, it is defined in the county ordinance as far as medium, large, and farm scale, but again, yours is probably different.
Ours, ours, large scale, is anything more than forty thousand square feet. Anything more than three thousand square feet.
And we're talking tonight just about what we're doing for the town of Culver and in the two-mile zone. So you got two different things to talk, but only one that pertains to us.
And I think the two-mile zone would go about to Sixteenth Road, is that correct?
I would entertain a motion from the council to include Bill's letter into the record. It's been moved by Mr. West.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamm. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's in the record, Bill.
Thank you.
Sally?
I think that, you know, quite frankly, when that was written, what they were talking about was solar, where the little solar panels on people's roofs and half a dozen out in their backyard picked up the rays from the sun and turn it into energy for personal use for your own home, not for industrial. I can't foresee, maybe I should say I would hate to foresee, an industrial solar farm taking over a large section of Marshall County or the Culver area. I think it would be detrimental to property values. I don't see how it could be anything but detrimental. And I agree that now those are setbacks where the personal use type, not industrial. So I'm in favor.
Bill?
As with any new industry, definitions of things like small, medium, large change over time as it grows. So we need to think ahead when we're defining these to make sure that we're covered better by these trends that change and the definitions that change over time. It sounds like this needs to be viewed maybe on an annual basis, even after we do it, to ensure that. But I agree with Sally a hundred percent. This is gonna affect property values. I think beyond them being in your backyard, it's gonna be something that's gonna be a stigma with Marshall County, just like Newton County over by the Illinois line has hundreds of windmills. So that's my thinking.
Obviously, most people are here for the hearing on the solar. I'm gonna ask that you limit your comments to maybe two to three minutes, and particularly if you have something else to add other than what's been presented. So remember to identify yourself by your name and address, and who wishes to go first? Yes, sir?
Greg Gilgram with Marshall County Economics Corporation. I'd just like to clarify a couple of things that were mentioned earlier. First of all, Invenergy has options on fifteen hundred acres. They've asked the grid operator to let them produce a hundred and fifty megawatts. It will not go any larger. That's the size of their project. So what they're waiting on now is for the grid operator to determine how much that they can actually store, and that will dictate how much of the land they use. Second of all, there is a stigma connected with solar power. It's the lack of it. If you talk to the people over in Allen County, Fort Wayne, they actually lost a large producer of cars. The scout project went to South Carolina because the mix of renewable energy that they were looking for was not up to their standard because they don't have solar power. That is one of the questions I get asked on a daily basis when companies are looking for sites to locate, is what is your power makeup? How much of that is renewable? Today, they are looking for a mix of renewable energy. That's why it's important that we draw a part. The coal and the natural gas plants are being shut down. There's just a continuous ask for more and more energy. I know the new plant up in New Carlisle is looking at almost a gigawatts of power. It's like, thankfully, it's gonna take a couple of years to build that so they can stay up to current on that. So this is one of those things that I'd like to address. Also, the increased setbacks. Be careful what you wish for because the more you set back, that's the more land they will need for solar farms, and it will be more farmland taken out of production as they, you know, buy options on land for solar farms. Those are just a couple of things. Oh, one last thing. I do want to know, the two big complater loves time, and I don't know how to separate them. The battery energy storage system and the solar panels, solar farm, are two completely separate companies doing two completely separate projects. You could have a solar farm without the battery energy storage systems. You could have the battery energy storage system without the solar farm. It's two... One is Avondale, the other one is Tenaska, and they are both want to be located near those transmission lines and that substation. So put a moratorium just on the solar isn't effective on the batteries, and actually, you shouldn't hold the batteries, the solar farm hostage waiting on the batteries. You see, same point. They're two completely separate projects and issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name's Chris Klein. I live at two zero four three five Queen Road in Culver, live on a six-generation family farm, and I also serve on the Marshall County Plan Commission, worked on the solar zoning ordinance. I'm an alternate on the BCA, county BCA, as well as I'm on the Lake Madison Environmental Fund, and I chair since Allen's passing, it could be Lake Madison Environmental Council. I'm not representing any of those organizations here today. I'm just sitting here on my own personal opinion. I would encourage the town councils of four... I would encourage the town councils before taking any step, drastic steps such as a moratorium to take, take a little bit of time and get more informed on this issue. There's been a lot of misinformation, and I say that based not on hours of study and internet research, but decades of work in this industry. I've worked in the energy industry. I've worked in the environmental industry since the mid eighties. There had been a tremendous amount of misinformation. Understandably, right, that, you know, when you learn about something for the first time, you go to the internet and try to find out about it. Just for to help calm things down. There are over a dozen federal and state agencies that regulate this industry right now, right? There's EPA, OSHA, Department of Energy, the IRS, Securities and Exchange Commission, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, the Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Trade Commission. In the state, we've got IDIM, we've got the state DNR, we've got now the state just passed a legislation on battery storage that brings the Homeland Security Department into the regulation. We have a lot of regulation of this industry. On top of that, we have the county ordinance, which I would, contrary to what has been asserted here today, is a very robust ordinance. It was like anything in the sausage making industry. It's not all what one side wants or all what the other side wants. It had a mix of input to it. The, in addition to those regulatory ADCs, though, you have MISO, which is the grid regulator, right? This is a private company that is also having to evaluate these systems from an energy and a safety and reliability standpoint. There's just a lot going on here. Before you would take a two-year moratorium on something that right now, there's over six hundred thousand acres of solar panels have been installed in the United States. All of this worry about, you know, hazards from these things, wouldn't we be seeing people getting sick or problems with them or not? There's, there is a little bit of angst that I think could be brought down. It was spent a little bit of time maybe and said, and studied this a little bit more. I think Jeanette brings up some good points about the setbacks and ordinances on for large systems. The likelihood of a utility scale solar system going in a two-mile radius of Culver is almost zero. Okay? I mean, it's just, it's just not, not likely. And so I think it, let's not get all worried about that. I have a number of other things. Maybe lastly, I would start with, this is a jobs creator. Greg kind of talked about that. I know dozens of people that work in Marshall County, engineers, scientists, field groups, administrative people that work in this industry. Are we gonna tell them, moratorium, we don't like your job, we don't approve of your jobs? That seems a little extreme. And it really, frankly, I've spent my career in this industry, in, in the energy industry. I care about the lake. I care about the community. I'm not gonna do anything to harm it. I'm not gonna work in an industry that harms this community. It's really, it's very hurtful to see that. And so anyway, I would, lastly, a growing part of this industry is something called agrable tanks. This is actually growing food and grazing sheep under these panels. It's actually farming under these panels. This is a growing part of this, of the solar field, the solar industry. And there's actually in Indiana, there's a hundred acres that's gonna be brought into a grazing or under these solar panels. You know, that's just, and that's a new thing that's happening. So we're gonna tell the farmer, no, we don't want you to put solar panels up. We also don't want you to grow food.
Okay, Chris, thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Chester Goot, twenty-one feet, I agree with Bill Githens, to establish a moratorium on this vision until we can examine and redo the
Thank you. Is anybody online? Okay, who's online, please?
Jenny Monroe is online.
Jenny?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware that Culver doesn't actually control zoning in the entire two-mile zone around us. We learned that through the comp planning process. There are parts outside of our district that are under our zoning. But one of the goals of the comp plan is actually to have the entire two-mile zoning area. So you're gonna wanna really look at a map because we are not the entire two-mile zone. I've talked to Ty Adley about that. And you have to work with the county on getting that entire two-mile zone. So just an FYI.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else? No one else on the list? Okay. Rich?
A lot of folks said it's very concerning to me. Obviously, we're all invested in our community and the quality of life and quality of place here. The problems that Jeanette potentially points out with our ordinance indicate basically that we have no expertise in this area. We really need to define what we're doing. And I guess to what Greg and Chris said, I would, I think we need to take some action. But I think the moratorium tonight, first time this has been introduced to us, is perhaps not a completely informed action. And I would suggest that we look at this and act relatively quickly, but I, I'm not comfortable tonight voting in favor of a moratorium.
Bill? You got a lot of work to do.
I'm in favor of a moratorium to look at, to give us time to look at what we're doing. You know, decisions need to be made. You either need to go forward or go backward. You don't just stay neutral. And I think, you know, if we make a decision to go forward, we can always change. I just don't like doing nothing. My comment.
Sally?
I would, I guess, in some regards, like to study it for a little while. Not any great not a large timeframe. And I guess my question is what, how long before they start getting permits and whatever else they need to build these, this farm in Marshall County? Exactly where, where is it located? I guess my question is how much time do we have to change our ordinance? Because you can't change zoning ordinance itself.
Bill?
Yeah, I agree with Sally and Bill. I think there should be a moratorium. You can always adjust it as we go. But let's not let anybody sneak in the back door. We don't know what we don't know. So right at this point, nobody knows what they're thinking and what they're planning. And if that's the case, let's just put a gate there and keep them from proceeding until we get our stuff together.
My thoughts are that I'm like Bill. I'm in favor of a moratorium. I think that there's a lot of unknown and I think Jeanette brought up the point that there's a study coming from the state. And I can't see the harm in having a moratorium. If we don't have a moratorium, it just opens the door for something to happen. So I'd like to ask the council, I would entertain a motion to impose a moratorium for two years. I will make that motion.
I would second.
It's been moved by Mr. Githens, seconded by Mr. Ham. Any further discussion prior to the council?
And in that moratorium, I wanna kinda add that we need to involve the plan commission to study this and to what, you got something you want to tell me?
I'd like you to certify the proposal to the plan commission today for a complete moratorium on large-scale solar energy systems and utility-scale battery and energy storage systems. And that will trigger them to conduct a public hearing.
Okay. I will acquiesce to
Is there a reason we need to assign a two-year time limit to this and not a shorter period of time?
That, that's, that's what the state deadline is.
October first, twenty twenty-four is when the decision study comes out.
They have to come out on time. So two years isn't gonna hurt.
And maybe the plan commission can develop a plan before then.
That's, that's where I'm at too, so.
Okay, it's been moved. I'm sorry, Bill.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to institute a moratorium. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Both same sign. Sally? Okay. Moratorium approved.
And I would like to, my only comment is that I would like to see it be resolved in less than two years.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that. Yeah, you know, that's just, we're not gonna sit on it till. Right.
All right, everybody else that's in the room are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Or you're welcome to leave.
My corn sign.
Oh.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay, next on the agenda. Don, are you ready?
So, good evening. Don Fox, three oh one North Shoreline Culver. I've heard a update on the South Bend LCAR Regional Partnership Make My Move program. First thing I want to share with you is a draft MOU that partnership has prepared for people who sign up for this program to make their move to either LCAR South Bend or Culver. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Same thing, and I was presented previously about this program with town council meeting. I'm not gonna repeat those, those points in the slides that I, I shared with you. I said I would, I would come back when there was an ask to make on behalf of this program. And so that is the other thing that I'm here to do this evening. Marshall County Economic Development Corporation has stepped up to the plate to fund half of the twenty-five hundred dollars that a mover would receive after relocating and staying for twelve months in Culver. And my ask of town council, the town council would step up to the remaining half of that, that is twelve hundred and fifty dollars per moving family who relocates their remote, their remote work, their family to Culver and stays in our community for a period of a year. Provided the council previously with some case studies that from other communities and regions in the state that have used Make My Move and started as pilot programs. This would be and found it successful enough that they went out on their own to continue it. The regional partnership is, they're on the hook for the first half of it. It's the full twenty-five hundred dollars. They assume really all the risk that somebody would move to one of our communities and decided it was not for them. In terms of backend, the ask of the communities from the regional partnership is really at zero risk. Because if somebody doesn't stay for that full twelve months, then there is, there's no incentive to do that. Our working group has also secured a bunch of other non-monetary incentives which, which people that make money use and say that's one of the most attractive aspects of this program. Because people who live in big cities, they find pull and impersonal, not the kind of places that they want to live and work in terms of quality of life. So frankly, where they want to raise their kids. So that is, that's my ask of council tonight, and I'm happy to respond to any questions to the best I can. Not able to respond to your questions, hopefully upon somebody who can.
How long the term of this be?
On the, under the terms of the MOU, somebody who signs up, let's say today, and we know that we have at least one family that has gone on website and said Culver looks like a heck of a lot better place to raise our family than Fort Worth versus where they're from. No disrespect to anybody who has Texas roots. Just saying, some people actually didn't move to Culver.
You said Fort Worth or Fort Wayne?
Fort Wayne. So, but after signing the MOU, they would have six months.
I saw that, but how long do you intend to have the program active to make the offer?
I would have to ask the regional partnership that question. I think that they're, my understanding is we're looking for people to sign up for the end of calendar twenty-three. But I can ask the regional partnership that question and confirm it.
So if they signed up in twenty-three, they would be coming here sometime in twenty twenty-four.
Yes, at the latest, they'd have, they'd have six months.
And we would not pay them until sometime in twenty twenty-five.
Correct. Yeah, so.
Give us time to actually put it in the budget. Making Karen jump through hoops to.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, there's no, yeah, if somebody, if somebody arrived next month, the earliest that anybody would earn the incentive would be August of twenty twenty-four. But we don't, we don't anticipate that's, that's the place. So, and specifically the target that we've talked about with the regional partnership and that I talked about with, with y'all in previous council meeting was up to ten families. No more than that for the ceiling. And if we get half that number, that would be the fabulous additions to our two.
If you're also exploring with CRC other options, including management of those programs through MCDC, perhaps on a contractual basis?
Yes.
So and I think sort of the immediacy of this ask is that the partnership is asking the Make My Move organization in Culver to to make its move.
Exactly, yeah. So it's kind of So I know that Bill has asked, Bill Ham has asked some really good questions about the assumption to, the slide that was included and presented that was prepared by Make My Move on economic impact. Because they rely upon a third party who does this kind of work and their proprietary software. We kind of chase that about as far as, as we can. I guess one way that I would encourage to look at this, though, is if we had a family and a remote worker and with a minimum income requirements who came and stayed in Culver for a year, would they generate more than twelve hundred and fifty dollars of additional economic activities for our community? I, I think that we would all agree that, yes, they would.
I would, I would make a motion that the I would, I would make a motion that the town Culver funded the Make My Move matched to the tune of $1,250 per family with the maximum of 10 families to be paid out at, after they had been a resident of Culver full time for 12 months.
With applications up till the end of 2023, a year from now.
That was my question. I, I think, I, I think we need to figure out what that, with that program is. I don't know that there's an end gap on it with the LCAR Regional Partnership, so.
As in the 10.
Yeah, it's the backs of the 10. I think if, you know, if, if it doesn't get legs and go anywhere, I think we can just, you know, I'd be happy to make a motion that we amend or, or cancel that.
It's been moved by Mr. West.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to pay out anything until 2024.
Right, you're right.
Yes.
Moved by Mr.
There was a lot of extra after.
My, sorry.
Concise and.
My motion is that the town of Culver can contribute $1,250 for his family for a maximum of 10 families in the LCAR, the South Bend LCAR Regional Partnership Initiative to Make My Move.
Is there a second? Pardon?
I will second it.
Moved by Mr. West and seconded by Mr. Sharty. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Check with the regional partnership on duration that they anticipate the pilot running. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny?
Yes. Good evening.
Destination 2040 update.
Sure. I just want to give you sort of a brief update since you've already had a long meeting and let you know where we are today. As you all know, we started this planning process last year, May-June timeframe about this time last year. And at that time, we'd been through some economic development workshops and gathered a group together that then became branded under the Culver Crossroads team. That particular group, along with several other people in the community, as we've been engaging the community, have come together to start the planning process and create the comp plan. We also did some public engagement activities, including a survey and some postcards at various Culver events and organizations across the town to gather feedback. So that led us into, a few months ago, we had established some core values and a vision statement for this plan. And from that work, we built out some subcommittees around those six core values. And to give you an idea of what those were, we chose Culver as a destination. So tourism and visitors. We also chose arts and culture, quality of place, quality of people, infrastructure and utilities, and business development and support. So those six subcommittees met and established some goals and strategies for the town of Culver. We have worked on those goals and strategies for the last few months with several people from across the community. We also made sure that we had Culver academies and Culver Community School representatives on each of those groups, taking those deeper dives into those core values. So now we'd like to take those goals and strategies out to the public again. And we plan on doing this throughout the month of July. And at that point, once we've collected feedback from everybody about those areas of life in Culver, we'll put together all the other components of the plan we've been working on with that feedback and finish off the plan with the goal of having the town council adopt the plan at your second meeting in August. We would love for all of you to attend at least one of these public engagement sessions as our locally elected officials. It's important to get your feedback on these goals and strategies. I know some of you have been heavily involved in the Crossroads Culver meetings and have already given some of that feedback. But we want to invite you to attend these meetings. And we would love also your help in facilitating and running those if you're available. So I just wanted to run through the list of when those are. Karen has posted these on your website and also on social media already. There's also flyers and postcards around town. But I wanted to let you know here at the council meeting and for the media, the first of those public engagement sessions is coming up on July 10th, which is a Monday. We're going to have two open house sessions on July 10th. Both of those are going to be at the Culver Community Middle High School in their cafeteria. One is from 11:00 AM till 2:00 PM. And then we'll do it again at 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM for people who can't get there during business hours. We'll follow that with another open house on July 11th at the Culver Town Public Library. That one will run from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And then we will end all of these sessions on a weekend day. For those who can't attend during the week, that'll be at a farmer's market session from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, July 22nd. Once all of that's done, Maek Hogg and myself will finish the, the narrative. I've written the narrative for the, the bulk of the chapters. But this particular section and one that kind of comes after it, we can't finish up until we've done this public engagement. So once July 22nd is passed, we will finish it up and come back to you in late August to adopt the new comprehensive plan for the town. And that's really a summary of kind of where we're at. Does anyone have any questions?
Jenny?
Yes.
Just to clarify, I have not posted that information yet. I'm waiting for Maek Hogg, so I don't want people to look for it and.
Oh, it's on your, it's on your social media Facebook page.
I'll put it up there then. The other question I have for you, just to clarify, is people don't have to stay the entire period of, of time, correct?
You're correct, Karen, yes, that's correct. Basically, it's a pretty seamless process. You'll come in and look at a list of key goals for across these six key areas. You will pick the priorities that you personally believe should be our goals. And then once you pick the three areas you, you want Culver to work on, you'll go to another set of tables and pick key strategies within those goals that you think we should prioritize. We have several goals and strategies, literally, you know, dozens and dozens. So this will help us establish the priorities for the town for the short term or what we would call like the five-year action plan. If you guys recall in 2014, when we did our comp plan, we created an action plan with Jonathan Leist when he was the new town manager. So as your new town manager comes in, you'll be able to give that person a nice sort of short-term list of the priorities that the community thinks you should be working on, as well as yourself and stakeholders across the community. So I would say, Karen, probably 15 to 20 minutes to come in and give feedback on these. Certainly, people can stay longer and engage more with the boards and the content. But it's, it's not something that would, you know, take two hours.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jenny?
No, that's all I have, Bill, unless you guys have questions.
Any questions? Rich?
No.
Bill?
Nope.
We have no questions, Jenny, but thank you very much.
Great, I hope I get to see you guys in July then. Take care.
All right, you too, the same, thank you.
Sure thing.
Next on the agenda is ordinance 23, or 2023, 2023-010, amended golf cart ordinance.
Yes, most sure. I sent you all an email this afternoon with a copy of the amended and restated ordinance. We've done this a few times. And it's pretty much word for word as your existing ordinance, with the exception that in Section 11, under violations, anyone violating any provisions of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of $150 per violation. That's exactly as the former one was. If a person has cited for a violation of this ordinance more than three times, that was in the plot fire ordinance. The ordinance provided that the registration shall be revoked for that individual and/or golf cart. And that individual and/or golf cart shall no longer be allowed to operate in limits of the town of Culver under this ordinance at the discretion of the Culver Police Department. That's the way Section 11 formerly read. I talked briefly after the last meeting with the town marshal, who was proposing to simply, if a person has cited for a violation of this ordinance, exclude the number of times, just indicate that he could be, the registration could be revoked for that individual or golf cart at the discretion of the Culver Police Department. Period. And I thought that was maybe not exactly what you guys wanted to give that much discretion to the town marshal to. If you do, I'll change it to that way. That's kind of what he was proposing. Instead, I tried to write this in such a way as would cover a situation that popped up by describing it that if a violation, in other words, would, would constitute a crime under laws of state of Indiana, a more serious kind of violation, that then he could revoke the license registration for a period up to one year. May very well be, there could be a violation that the law would impose a different time period anyway. And leave in also that there was a requirement for just a normal violation of three times. So that's the way I sent it. I don't expect you guys necessarily to prove it this evening. I'm just telling you that the town marshal had his thoughts of just giving him broad discretion that whenever there's a violation, he could or could not revoke it. I tried to indicate that we were still going to leave the three times and that only under sort of a more serious situation would he be able to revoke it. And then I did go along with, rather than just, for as long as he said, for a period of up to one year. Okay.
Question, clarification. Uh, the first time you read the number of tickets, which would result in a revocation. You said more than three times. That tells me the fourth time it's revoked.
That's the way the former ordinance was written.
Okay.
It's not revoked until.
We're changing that to three now.
No, it's still, if a person has cited for a violation of this ordinance more than three times.
Okay.
Then the registration shall be revoked, meaning that when it's not up to the discretion of the town marshal in an instance where misconduct could have constituted another crime, then he has to wait, we have to wait until the fourth violation to revoke.
Okay, I just, this is the first time I heard that. I thought it was three times the last time.
Well, it was more than three times the last time.
Okay, got it, got it.
And if, if you wanted it three times, we, one time it may have been that way, but whatever reasons.
No, I just want to make sure it's consistent, that's all. Clarify that. There's nothing that I saw in this ordinance that talks about due process, but is that sort of an overriding regulation that applies?
Still, yeah, still would be.
So in other words, if, if the marshal were to defend somebody's privileges, that person so cited could come before the council for a hearing and then also could have.
Still have legal due process. And I think the other ordinance didn't provide in there that someone had a complaint or had tried to file some kind of a exception that they would ask the town council to review the matter.
So none of this overrides any of that?
Yeah, I, the only thing that I proposed to change was the part about the town marshal's discretion. And as I said, I, after the meeting, he was proposing that. I thought that seemed a little extreme. And I didn't, I did, I thought he was going to call me, he never did. I just went ahead and made these revisions and said, I'll just throw this out to you all and you guys tell me what you want to tweak and we'll go from there.
Wayne?
I have another question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
Okay, so you're saying what period of time do they need to get four tickets for it to be revoked? What, what period?
I think it was in a, I think it was just any, after any, four. I don't think there was a period of time.
So it could be over 10 years.
Could be over 10 years.
And then it's revoked for 12 months, right?
No, then it was revoked for the discretion of the town marshal. Your current ordinance just says it's revoked at the discretion of the town marshal.
For how long?
Just, just at his discretion.
Okay.
The new ordinance says for up to one year.
Okay.
Or what I.
What you proposed, yeah, okay, thank you.
Bill?
I would say let's, give us two weeks to digest and, and read and.
Yeah, and get, get Wayne's input.
Wayne and talking about ourselves and even if we had to consult with you, sir. You know, is, you know, obviously your opinion means an awful lot too.
Well.
And I want to make sure it's covered.
I, I just think we're a little loose out there by just giving the town marshal.
I don't disagree.
Total discretion.
I don't disagree, but I want to read the whole thing.
I mean, the, the problem is, is that, you know, one of these kind of severe cases pops up and, and, you know.
So I'm, I'm looking at.
Sally?
I, I want to read it, consider it, and put it on our next meeting's agenda.
Wayne, you have something to say?
Think there's a misconception there, like we're just going to randomly start making those like. Apologize for not calling, I thought. You know, ring of attitude, so. I mean, yeah, we can discuss it. Think the more taken out of the violation.
Just after the, on the third one, we.
I'm asking for something.
Yeah, and probably just so you know, if you would have asked me, I would have told you it was three times, but all the way back to 2018. More than three.
All right, I think we're in agreement that we're going to look at this in a couple of weeks further in depth and Wayne and, and council can see what you can work out. Okay. Department heads report, AMS. Jeff, you on? Fire, Terry?
Yeah, I'm on. I don't really have anything. I just want to remind everybody, 4th of July is coming up. Number one in that category. And our town is a very bustling community all of a sudden. And that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you, Terry.
He was, he dropped out. He said July 4th is coming up and then it stopped. So I don't think you got his whole comment.
Bad connection.
Terry, you want to say that again? What, you think we had a bad connection?
Yeah, I've been, just been cutting in and out the whole time, trying to listen to the meeting.
You just cut out again.
Say 4th of July and. Yeah.
Your comments? And I'll read them.
Would you text Karen your comments? Wayne, please. Wayne, please. Amber, you on for Park?
Yes, I'm online.
Do you have anything?
Yes, um, I am just requesting approval, uh, for the following quote from DME elevators and lifts. To, um, fix the integrated phone system and the pedestal base plate inside. The, um, shaft of the elevator, uh, the totals for nine thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Nine thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents?
Correct.
May I have a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Ham. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Sharty. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Both same sign, approved.
Thank you, that is all.
Okay, Bob?
First one is our CCMG, our community match grant through NDOT. The grant opportunities open that one July third. One of the. One of the items that I need from you guys is a financial, uh, backing letter. We draft one for your consideration. The twenty-five percent of your total saving left is eighty-eight thousand one hundred five. Which is within our budget. Approve that amount and sign that letter. I will attach it to that.
I'd make a motion for that. I'd make a motion to be approved, um, the funding match for the CCMG. Um, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars and authorize for superintendent to sign the letter under yet to be present. President of the council sign the letter up.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. West and second by Mr. Githens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
And they every cover, they require you to put twenty-five percent match in?
It used to be eighty, or twenty.
Oh, they upped it? Must be running out.
This is one of the few, it's relatively simple, but most things are not this one. Next item, I have three check valves in sewer plant aid replaced. American pumping valves have been. One thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars to replace those check valves. They'll come out of sewer.
I have motion to approve the, uh, amount for the check valve. This been moved by Mr. Githens in a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Both same sign, approved.
Next item I have is the next phase of our new well seat is to put the twelve inch diameter casing in the ground. Screen on the end, do all the hydro, hydrological studies. Testing flow characteristics, that phase is eighty-nine, eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you'd like to proceed. After that will be the pump and motor design. Then after that, I'll be connecting it, putting it in service, connecting it to.
There are a motion to approve.
And it will be, this will be funded from the art fund. This won't be out of the.
Been moved by Mr. Ham. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Bob, do you have any estimate of what the total thing for the pump's going to be, for the well's going to be?
I asked that, and you're. They keep saying that they can't design the pump and the motor until you see what the characteristics that they have.
So some stages and all that.
It's just that menu I gave you when we started this two years ago, we're just.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
One other item is it takes, well, it was fifty-two weeks to get meters. It's down to thirty-eight weeks. We're getting better, but I would like to go ahead and order another fifty water meters, five eighths, but three quarter, and another fifty radio reads. It won't, you don't pay for it now, you pay for it when it comes in. That's going to be thirty-seven weeks away for nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. That would be a water service.
Motion to approve the water meters?
Question on that first. Is any of that impacted by Karen, you're talking about some of the billing, um, software and things like that? Is, is the, is the radio reads impacted by?
Mygradable.
It is.
Once, once we upgrade, the way that we read, this steps right into, we don't have to.
I just wanted to make sure.
We have to change the programming on the meters, but not the meters.
Okay, but thank you.
Are you talking about the reading system?
Well.
Or just the utility building software that I've been discussing upgrading?
Well, the reading system, and then if that does integrate with the, the billing software that we're looking at, potentially.
It will integrate, because it's what we currently have.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure they were compatible. I assume they were.
I have a motion to approve the purchase of the meters.
Still moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Ham. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Sharty. All those in favor signify, excuse me, by saying aye. Thank you. Anything else, Bob? I think before Bob, uh, finishes, I think that, uh. A job well done is well, uh, deserved for Bob and his crew, um, College Avenue. Was immense. Uh, I don't know anybody else, uh, I, I went up and looked at it and I was amazed. That they were able to do it in the, as quickly as they did, and I think that's just a great job, Bob, for you and, uh. Dick Sainer and. That. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna find out how much it is one of these days, aren't we? But, uh, but a good job, Bob, uh, you and your crew.
Yeah, ditto that. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, board and commissions report. Steve?
Evening.
Plan Commission. Both our CRC had one meeting in June, was in a District C two, tear down and replace the second story deck. Uh, that was approved, already done. Plan Commission had one item on the agenda for the June meeting. The application was filed to approve a rezoning of property from R two to C two, commercial district. The address of the property is eight thirty North Lake Shore Drive. The vote was four, one, and one, and therefore did not pass. An appeal was requested and it will become for this council. Make the decision, and that's the, uh, bed and breakfast that they want to rezone and make a hotel. Plan Commission also has authorized me to begin the steps to revert the PUD. For the Culver investment property or town SD property back to an S one district. The PUD has expired. This will be on the July Plan Commission meeting agenda. So this will come before this word after that meeting. The BZA had one item on the agenda for the June meeting. Petition was filed by. Mr. Kevin Berger to approve a variance of usage for the property located at State Ward seventeen. The petition requests a special use variance for a mini warehouse development. A mini warehouse development is a light commercial use that is allowed as a special use for the S one district in the social past. And for me, my report is there are ten building permits applied for in May. They're in various stages from incomplete applications to complete. And the total money revenue from that for Culver for May was four thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Steve.
Nice to, thank you.
Sally, Redevelopment Commission? Marty, are you online?
He had to ask me to.
I, I am, but, uh, yeah, Sally's going to give the report for us. Thank you.
Basically, uh. During our meeting and, and since then, we've discussed, uh, getting together with Karen and county auditors, taking a look at the. Property values, uh, in the coming months to see what properties should be added or dropped from the TIFs. That we currently have and are, we are going to be having a joint meeting with the overlapping taxing units. Like school and other units, and that will be held in conjunction with our CRC meeting. September eighteenth, that would be five fifteen.
Anything else?
That basically is it?
Thank you. Free commission?
No report.
No report for the free committee. Karen, Clerks' report.
I have a couple of claims for you to approve. Um, two of them are for EJ Prescott, one is for nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. And the others for five thousand eighty-five eighteen, and those are both, uh, water source split for materials and supplies. And then Marshall County Economic Development Corporation for two thousand five hundred, and that is their quarterly payment.
I entertain a motion to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars. It's been moved by Mr. Githen, seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Um, and then I was, Wayne had a question from Jewel in the back about what the firework regulations are. And maybe it would be a good spot to share those so that it's on the record and then we don't. Actually, could you come up and speak loud, this is people online, you can hear it too.
Side off. Verbatims. Your better sense.
I won't.
Just decided on per, verbatim. I can't do without, we go through this every year, but there's certain times of the year that it's allowed. It's not like for months on end, you know, not like every holiday or anything like that. But it does cover certain times of the day. I mean, it's pretty easy to look up on, it's governed, our ordinance follows state statute. So. Not hard to look up. Find it.
Um, fireworks may be discharged only between the hours of nine AM to eleven PM any day except on Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and New Year's Eve. When the times are nine AM to midnight. It is important to check with local officials as ordinance may restrict the use of fireworks.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. And then I am just, um, in Fort Wayne this week at the Indiana League of Municipal Clerks and Treasures Conference. Um, we had. Education classes yesterday. I taught a class first thing in the morning, I passed practices. Um, there were, uh, classes on comprehensive planning and then, uh, uh, a two-hour class by Kelly Richmond Pope. Who is a producer of the documentary called All the Queen's Horses, and if you have not watched it, I. I really encourage you to watch that. Um, it's available on Amazon Prime and it's a fascinating documentary on how. Rita Crandwell, uh, who was the controller of Dixon, Illinois, made out with fifty million dollars from the town.
What is the name of the game? It's a training course.
Actually, we are using it as a training course on internal controls and how to, because it points out all the different mistakes that were made. On the part of that municipality in that they did not have oversight, and she was actually able to, to create a, um. Her own bank account and transfer money and no one was checking. So that's why, you know, I try to, you know, make sure somebody comes in and reviews the bank statements. And the bank reconciliation, and we have other controls, like when Julie, Julie repeats the money and then I check her deposit at the end of the day. Or if I'm out of town, we really appreciate Steve and Wayne being around to check that. Um, so it's a whole internal control thing. So I just, I encourage you to watch that. She had a fascinating, um, talk yesterday on actually whistleblowers. And how they impact, um, how they are important, and, um, I have a book if anybody wants to borrow it.
What, what is the, uh, uh, program again?
All the Queen's Horses.
All the.
All the Queen's Horses.
All the Queen's Horses. I remember that.
It was out about two or three years ago when it came out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, it is great.
Yeah, so, um. She was, she was a horse breeder.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's fascinating.
Thank you.
It is kind of irritating too. She gives us all a vibe, you know, makes us all look bad, whether we're, you know, we're trying to do our best, so. Um, and then we had state border accounts, had, uh, several specialists today and I'll have some tomorrow as well, so. It's been busy.
Sounds like a most worthwhile conference. You have anything else, Karen?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Council?
Got three things tonight. Uh, first, as you all are aware, that shortly after the last meeting, Judge Bowers did. Make a ruling on, uh, our Culver Neighbors for Responsible Del- Development case against the town Culver, the developers and the. The Grant folks up in, uh, South Bend and Elkhart. And as you were, Judge Bowers entered an order on the plaintiff's motion for leave to amend his complaint. Um, and basically said the plaintiff's request to file the second amended complaint was okay. But then he turned right around and, uh, had, the complaint had already been dismissed for counts one and two. And, uh, as to counts three, four, and five, uh, the court agreed with Culver and Regional Development Authority, dismissed count three of the second amended complaint for failure to stay the claim. Uh, the court determined that the count, uh, four was not freestanding, that was the injunction account, uh, account claim anyway. And they have until tomorrow to figure out some other kind of claim that would support a request for injunction, but. I have no idea what that would be at this point, uh, given that counts one and two were dismissed. Um, and then count three was dismissed. Um, I haven't received anything from the plaintiffs to date. If I get something, I will. The court also went on to say that as to count four, Culver's entitled to a discretionary function immunity, so I suppose they could. You know, he could, they could file something against the developer that would exclude the town. I guess that's some kind of a possibility, but. We'll have to see where that is. Uh, so in light of the judge's order, uh, we've kind of proceeded with the Dunes Housing Project. As was, uh, somewhat originally proposed. Uh, we're, uh, on hold at the moment for count five, which was the access to records. Complaint of the plaintiff and for our, pursuing our countersuit against the defendants that was, we filed as part of our initial pleadings. So that's kind of an update where you are, and if I get any further developments on that, which I'm not really expecting probably to get. We'll, we'll let you know. We're trying to deal with the access thing is kind of a, not that big of a deal, but we'll find out.
One question.
Yes.
Uh, what about litigation fees?
Okay, litigation fees were part of our countersuit. So, uh, we're at this point kind of on hold on those to see what goes with the remaining part of the access records. And to see what the judge may or may not do with those before we try and pursue those. We have not given up.
We're not to that point yet.
Well, we're not. I know that, uh, the commi-, uh, councilman, uh. Clevenger was looking for maybe some kind of a session to talk about that and so forth, but. Uh, Jen and I think that probably we ought to just, uh, wait a little bit on that and then we'll, we'll. But we have not forgot about it and we plan to take it up.
Thank you.
Um, and I made mention of the fact that we are proceeding with Dunes Housing Project and. So I got back with the. Tax incremental financing team and, uh, this sort of the whole, the, the group that's, uh, putting that together. And we decided, uh, we need some input from you all, Culver Redevelopment Commission, Town Council. Uh, and we've got some preliminary numbers that we're going to share with you. Uh, we've got some thoughts that we're going to share with you. Uh, because this is going to involve negotiations eventually with the developer. If we can't do this in an open meeting, uh, and, but. We will review some of these things and we will make a call on these things that are in the meeting when we get to that point. And at this point, we've got a tentative lead time set up for an executive session, Wednesday, July fifth at ten o'clock. So you're going to have to participate online. So you're going to have to participate online. Is that what I heard?
I can't even do that.
Oh, you can't do that. Okay. Well, get with Marty or Sally or me and we'll, I'll fill you in because it'd be nice to have everybody's input.
Yeah, Marty's going to get with.
And I think the rest of you are all good to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the final thing I had was the 415 Lofts project. I, when I was putting this together, I was going to indicate I'm still waiting for the completion of the, the record or the transcript of both the hearing, the BZA and the Plan Commission. Just before I left the office, I got a note from Attorney Snyder. They said he was, thought he was missing some documents. I know Attorney Barker had furnished those to me and I had passed them on through a drop box. And I, my, my office was trying to figure out with his office whether he had them or he didn't have them, but apparently the transcript is nearly complete. And I'm supposed to review that and we've got a time, not till the end of next week, to get that recorded and filed. So we're getting close to at least getting that piece completed. And of course, as you know, we've got a hearing scheduled for several weeks down the road to do our thing. So that's the update I have on our kind of pending litigation and other matters, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Utility shut off or ordinance violations, anyone in the room? Anyone online? If not, citizen input.
This is Marty and I wanted to let you all know that we have an opening on the, the Redevelopment Commission that was created earlier this month. So with Karen's help, we're going to be dipping back into the talent pool of our, our local citizenry in hopes of finding another potential appointment for you to make. I guess that's one comment. And just gratuitously, I'll throw in that Dixon, Illinois is only about the size of Plymouth and it just always boggles my mind that they could find $50 million undetected by that clerk there in Dixon, Illinois. And it also happens to have been the boyhood home of Ronald Reagan. It's something like that.
When would you like to have a deadline to have those applications for Redevelopment Commission?
That's a great question.
Before the next council meeting?
I would say so.
You want them the Friday before? So you have time to review them?
Yes, the Friday before. Thank you, Karen. Yes, ma'am.
Nancy Miller, 16270 Pear Road, Culver. And I'm here because the corn is growing. And I'm here as I have been so many times to ask for permission to place the sign at the corner on Highway 10 and Highway 17. No, it's not 17. What is it?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, 17 comes in. Anyway. The sign is, is of course a benefit for our business, but it is also important for people in the community because it lets them know that we are open and that, you know, we have things available that they want. So I would very much appreciate your approval to place the sign as we have done for so many years.
I would move that we approve placing the sign at the intersection of Route 10 and 17 to identify for local residents, the availability of corn at Hillers Farm. During your growing season.
Second. Moved by Mr. West. Second about Mr. Ham to approve the placement of the sign. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you for proving this to me that we're all looking forward to it next weekend. And also, I'm not quite sure who's responsible, Bob, maybe you and perhaps part of the Town Council or CRC, but the repainting of the wayfinding signs on the road, we really appreciate that. They were certainly looking very heated. So that you were, thank you, Bob. One kudos for Bob. So really appreciate that. I know wayfinding is something that we've discussed a lot, a lot over the last couple of years, and that's just one part of what we hope will be a broader wayfinding initiative, but we really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Anything else? Anyone, anyone else?
1111 North Lake Shore Drive. I was just curious, I was in the hallway, so it was hard to hear. Can I get a clarification of the rundown of how the wording of the moratorium is? Just like what it's covering two years. I heard that, but this is basically how it breaks down.
Can I get that from Jeanette and get it to you?
Yeah.
And you know, it's true. Okay.
Awesome.
Can I do just one more, one more thing? Whenever you were reading the Wayne was doing such a nice job reading the ordinance for the fireworks, could you post that on TGL or let me know?
I'll get it out there before.
It'll be a big, thank you.
I assume there's no one online now.
No.
Okay. Jeff, are you on for EMS week? Jeff's not on. Counselors, Mr. West?
I would just echo the comments made earlier to thank Bob and his crew for cleaning up the best four-letter word we can use in public.
Don't be too nice to them. Don't be too nice to them.
Anyway, thanks. You did a great job. You did a great job, Mr. Sloan. Thank you.
Bill?
This is basically just an FYI. The library is going under renovation to the upstairs and to the meeting area. Downstairs and we've got surveys out on Town Garden Lake in person at the library and they are posted up there until July the 11th. So please, patrons of the library, go by and it takes not even five minutes to fill out the surveys and get it in. We're looking to improve those areas of the library.
Thank you. Sally?
I don't have anything to add.
I have nothing, Bill.
I have nothing to do.
I entertain a motion to adjourn. It's a move. It's moved by Mr. Guthans. Second by Mr. West. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.